Okay, we're going to be starting next with our next agency, which is the Baltimore Convention Center. And we're going to be have, we're going to hear a presentation at this time.
Am I on? Can everybody hear me? Wonderful. Good morning, Madam Chair McCray, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Matt Campbell, the Executive Director of the Baltimore Convention Center. With me is Jake Shinn Chugani, who's my Director of Financial Operations. I appreciate the opportunity to present our FY26 budget and welcome your feedback and questions. The mission of the Convention Center is to generate positive economic impact to the city and state, create jobs, and serve our community. We see ourselves not just as an engine for economic impact, but as a proud civic institution rooted in the heart of our city. We take seriously our role as stewards of public dollars and strive to ensure that if the BCC is the only building a visitor steps into, they leave with an authentic sense of Baltimore. This, that commitment shines in our participation in the Mayor's Downtown Rise Initiative, where we're helping bring new energy, beauty, and culture to the corridor. From vibrant public art created during last year's Brush Mural Festival, to interior window cling celebrating iconic Baltimore landscapes, to highlighting some of the best local food and beverage at our retail locations, we're proud to honor the people and places that make Baltimore Baltimore. Additionally, in the past two years, we've intentionally brought important community events under our roof. Events like the Mayor's Interfaith Empowerment Symposium, SMBND's Advancement Conference, and starting in '26, we're very excited to be the new home for the Baltimore City Civil Rights Breakfast. In FY24, the impacts of the Convention Center operation generated over $5.7 million in city tax, $15.1 million in state tax, and a total of $273 million between direct and indirect spending. It's important to note that the vast majority of those paying into those numbers are visitors from outside our state, leaving their money in our community. While doing this work, we're also a catalyst for job creation in the local hospitality, trades, and tourism workforces, accounting for over 1,900 jobs annually, the majority of which are filled by city residents. While the Convention Center is a direct operating expense to the city, it's important to underscore that approximately 2/3 of our deficit is offset by the state. This means that only a fraction of our total costs fall to the city's general fund. The FY26 budget presents a $29.6 million budget that after our revenue earned and state deficit subsidy will equate to around $6.6 million of expense to the city. As you may know, our building is aging. Much of the core infrastructure at the Convention Center dates back to when we first opened our doors in 1979 and has yet to be meaningfully modernized. That really shapes both the urgency and the intentionality behind our goals for FY26. As part of the Mayor's legislative agenda, House Bill 1016 was signed into law last month, which enables further work of the Baltimore Convention and Tourism Redevelopment and Operating Authority Task Force. Its end goal is to facilitate change in funding and governance mechanisms to better align the Convention Center with our national peers, and in doing so, making the BCC more impactful and operationally more efficient. Starting this summer, we'll be leveraging over $30 million in capital from the city and the state to begin to chip away at what's close to $130 million deferred maintenance backlog. Through these investments, the most since our expansion in 1997, we will increase appeal to our meeting planners, booking events, as far out as 2041. A few highlighted projects include upgraded fire life safety systems, renovated restrooms, and a rehabilitated pedestrian bridge connecting us to one of our major hotels. Working its way through the procurement process as we speak is an RFP for digital signage, is a management partner contract to drive revenue in exciting ways here at the BCC. With no digital signage infrastructure currently, this new partner will work alongside us to build that capacity to brand the interior and exterior of our building, enabling customers to brand their shows in new ways, drive more sponsorship dollars for their show, and will allow us to engage community with municipal messaging and public art. I'm incredibly proud of the center's dedicated staff, along with our strong partnership with Visit Baltimore. Operating a facility that sees over 450,000 annual visitors and supports over 194,000 hotel nights, while managing aging infrastructure and creating a seamless citywide customer experience is no small feat. At our core, our values of service, pride, empathy, inclusion, and growth ensure that we represent the best of Baltimore to guests all over the world. While we're energized by the progress happening both at the Convention Center and throughout downtown, we also recognize that there are real challenges ahead. Factors we're monitoring closely as we continue to deliver on our mission and maximize our impact. Coupled with the diminished footprint of nearby restaurants and attractions post-COVID, selling Baltimore as a convention destination continues to be an uphill battle. The pandemic drastically altered the booking landscape for major conventions nationwide, with many associations committed to other cities through 2026, leaving fewer opportunities for us to compete for. The agent, the facility's age continues to hinder our competitiveness. To stay viable, we are often forced to offer deeply discounted rental rates to remain in the running against newer venues, thus increasing our agency deficit. Additionally, as you will see noted in the operating highlights, we've had to increase our repairs, maintenance, and supplies by over $600,000 for FY26 to align with prior year actuals. But I will take a moment of privilege here to point out that that $600,000 could have easily been several million if it weren't for our amazing maintenance and engineering team that we have in-house, solving many of these large building failures in real time without needing to outsource expertise or to cancel events. Federal constraints are quietly reshaping the events industry, and Baltimore is not immune. Shifts in policy and political volatility are chipping away at attendance from key federal and defense-related organizations that have historically anchored our schedule. From losing bookings due to federal traveling freezes and executive orders impacting DEI, these changes don't just affect numbers. They threaten inclusive programming, diminish diversity of thought, and reduce opportunities for the local economy. This is a national challenge with real local consequences for which Baltimore is feeling in its tourism footprint. The Baltimore Convention Center remains steadfast in its mission and is really eager about the future. While those challenges persist, so does our commitment to meeting them head-on with smart investments, intentional planning, and a relentless focus on delivering value to the city and the state. We see real opportunities on the horizon from strengthening our sales pipeline, generating new revenue streams, and to better align our building with the needs of both planners and residents. We are very, especially encouraged by the allocation of ARPA funds to Visit Baltimore recently, and we're working very closely with them to leverage those resources in ways that incentivize events that drive maximum impact to our community. As mentioned earlier, we also remain hopeful that the Mayor's efforts to establish best-practice governance through the BCC Task Force will lead to more predictable and sustainable capital funding, allowing us to be more proactive in the ongoing care and modernization of this essential civic asset. In all, we are not just managing a facility, we are building momentum, amplifying Baltimore's story, and working every day to ensure the Baltimore Convention Center remains an economic and cultural cornerstone for the city. Thank you for your time and continued support, and I am happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Executive Director. For FY2026, what is the economic impact that the, um, and that estimated amount that you feel you're going to be impacted, and I feel that you're going to be impacted by the federal government's actions? Like you mentioned, the freeze on travel and a few other items as well.
So, I'm going to try to answer that question in a couple different ways, and hopefully I touch on all your concerns. So, every, every year after we close out, the Maryland Stadium Authority, as a partnership with them, they process an economic impact study for the previous year. That tells us, okay, here are the total impacts of the Convention Center and how that relates to their subsidy of our operation, right? Again, that's about 2/3 of our deficit. From that talks, that's where we get all the actual tax revenue, how it breaks down city-state, job creation, all that kind of good stuff. Historically, the Convention Center has been a 4 to 1 return on investment for the state and always a positive impact on the city. That furthers the justification for our existence. Coming out of COVID, as you can imagine, we were closer to 1 to 1. As coming, recently FY24, that report produced a 2 to 1 return on investment, again trending back towards pre-COVID numbers. FY26, so I can't really tell you until the event calendar solidifies what the economic impact numbers at that high level really trend and what they're looking like. But what I can tell you is what we're seeing in FY25 right now. We have a, an event that is headquartered in Baltimore, the Black Engineer of the Year Awards, wonderful client. They, the executive orders kind of went in right as they were moving into our building. They're, they're a fantastic resource for top-level talent in engineering programming for the federal government, for all the military institutions. They just happen to be focused on African-American folks giving those opportunities. And unfortunately, all of the branches of the military bailed at the last minute. So, when you talk about the impacts, the event happened, but did those folks get opportunities for real job placement? Not as, not as much. Did, did the United States benefit from their knowledge moving forward in jobs? No. And then trickle down to us. Job functions like a banquet for 1,600 with the full Joint Chief of Staff and all the folks ended up being 400, right? So, you're talking less labor servicing the event, obviously less revenue to our service provider, Levy Restaurants as well as us. So, there's lots of things like that. We've also had a military group that just canceled their event outright due to travel restrictions for DOD. We are a value proposition, being in between Philadelphia and DC, where our airlift is exceptional, our cost of conducting business is cheaper than those destinations. And so, we have benefited a lot from the federal government space, and that has changed. We had a military tech group last month. That was about 15% down in attendance for that reason alone. And that was with them incentivizing free for federal employees and all that kind of good stuff. So, folks are still really trying to figure out what that landscape looks like. And because every day when you turn on the news, there's a new wrinkle or a contradiction of what we were being told the day before, it's really hard to, the crystal ball's a little murky. What I will say is that for the last two years I've been standing here, we've said that the pipeline for convention business was drastically impacted by us not being available to source, to site, to engage customers while we were a field hospital, right? The field hospital was the important thing. Don't get it twisted. We were the longest operating field hospital with patient load in the country, and it's something we're really, really proud of. But we can't walk people through to talk to them about their trade show when we're a hospital. So, we lost business during that time. And as I mentioned, we're sourcing RFPs out to 2042 right now. Like, that's crazy even for me to fathom, talking about 2040 in 2025. So, there's a lag effect on how, you know, when we tour somebody to when their economic impact is felt in our community, and sometimes that's five, eight, 10 years. So, we've been seeing through 2026 that COVID space really impacting business. '27 and '28 are pipelines of lead generation, and real meaningful conversations are not quite to FY19 numbers, but they're way better than they have been, indicating that we're starting to really gain traction. Visit Baltimore and I and my team are working a lot closely, more closely to incentivize business, kind of pairing with where we see where the hotel community may be struggling. We make sure that we're like, okay, how do we help close that gap, right? Because we don't see hotel tax in our budget, but we know it exists, right? And it helps further not only Visit Baltimore's mission, but the city's general fund. So, how can we maybe take one for the team, but do it intentionally with strategy? So, I went away around the mulberry bush to answer your question, Councilwoman, but I can give you what our projected business looks like for '26 right now. But as, but that's like, here are the events, here are the days that they're here. Here's what they're telling us they're going to do. Here's how many people they say typically come to their event and stay in hotels. But until that actually happens, it's hard to give you economic impact numbers until we're kind of in the middle of it, or even better, about, you know, six to 12 months passed. So, we can really work with the city to gain those tax revenue numbers. Because it's not like real time. I wish it was. Where I could say like, this event happened today, and then the week or last week, we are able to look at the hotel registry and be able to figure out what the tax revenue was and be able to do a snapshot real time. That's usually a several-month lag.
I appreciate your answer. I'm good with what you provided right now.
Okay.
How much are, and I know it hasn't went up yet, it hasn't been implemented, but how much revenue are you guys looking to generate from that new digital signage program that you're speaking about? It's going to be on the interior and exterior. I see that in other places. I'm really excited that that will be happening at our Convention Center. So, how much are you looking to generate for that project?
So, so I'm clear about what we're doing to make sure that there's perspective. This is a management contract that will do interior and exterior. We know the success and how the downtown signage district has really kind of put a shot in the arm of driving through downtown. We can kind of do signage takeovers to say, hey, CIAA is coming. Or when a site is coming to visit, hasn't signed a contract yet, we can welcome them in really meaningful ways. It's wonderful. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we're creating an asset that our customer in-house can really leverage. Because if you drive past our building and we're hopping, you'll see vinyl banners everywhere. That's kind of the analog solution, and we're living in a digital world. So, we're trying to not only create outside so that the car show, for example, can advertise them and their sponsors on our building while they're here, but inside, we do signage everywhere. Every blank, flat piece of surface gets a sign on it. How can we, currently where we don't earn revenue off of that, we just give it to them as a blank slate? How can we provide a service to make that more dynamic? So, we're looking at millions of dollars of top-line revenue in that piece annually, of which we will get a large percentage of it. Most of our service provider contracts, whether it's food and beverage, whether it's digital signage or our telecommunications internet provider, they're all, we all bring in these partners of which we get a commission off of all the sales. And we work very closely. They live in our building. Their GMs live in our community to make sure that we're really intentional with that. So, currently, it's the RFPs with procurement. We're hoping, I'm praying, that it gets on the street very soon. I would very much like to see revenue in FY26 from that contract. I think that is possible, but it's scalable too. So, what we see this year might be smaller format signage, portable signs that we can move around the building. But with a year under the belt, with a partner like that, all the stuff that you see driving through other destinations or even through downtown, you can expect here when you go to a convention hotel in Las Vegas or any, quite frankly, any country or any, any state in the country, they have digital signage. These are the things that we're trying to help catch up with.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, my comment, convention centers are so important in all of our cities and particularly in Baltimore. And as we're, especially now more than ever, as we're, as a city going through revitalization and where you're centrally located, you know, next to the, I still call it the Baltimore Arena, hotel, you know, just the whole makeup of where you are and how we attract people, your connections with Visit Baltimore, and all of that is just so important. And just thank you first for what your organization continues to do for our city in bringing people in and out. So, my question is, a number of people avoid things at the Convention Center because just something simple is parking. And also with the arena, I, myself, I've experienced parking in certain areas, and when the event is over, it takes over an hour to get out of the parking lot. And it's just, it's hurting revenue that's coming in. So, do you talk about that at the table, at your table when, you know, you're discussing events and it's just, it should be at the top of the list?
Let me speak, thank you, Councilwoman. Let me speak closely to the microphone. We think about it all the time. Here, here's a couple updates that I can give you. Obviously, we don't want the world to be just a one type of transportation mode. So, when I'm talking about all this, please keep in mind we're also big into our carbon footprint, so I don't want to just be like cars, cars, cars. But as we look at how we redevelop our property, how we evolve, in every program that we talk about, how do we get onsite parking? It might not be, it's not going to be 1,000 stalls. It's not possible. But a couple hundred would make a huge difference. Additionally, the collapsed garage that is part of One East Pratt, the PNC Building, is in its final stages of being rebuilt after it collapsed during the pandemic. So, that's going to be a lot of non-peak weekend transient parking capacity that we're going to pick back up, which is a really good sign. And then my team is working really closely, because here's the thing, right? We are here for out-of-town visitors. They come in the light rail, they get in an Uber, they go to a hotel. They don't need, they don't need a car. They don't need to park. But we do have lots of groups that fill in our holes in our calendar that are drive-in, that are our regional asset, right? Whether it's the cheer and dance competitions, whether it's the Comic-Con or what have you. So, we're working very closely with transportation providers to figure out how shuttle services could be added. We're working very closely with the Stadium Authority and other lots that have proximity and capacity to say, how can we offer and subsidize an easier way to go? And I mean, I'll share a perfect example to your point. AFC Championship Weekend two years ago, Chiefs, Ravens. We had had a cheer and dance show in for several days prior. I'm standing in our driveway, and a woman, mother of a participant, rolls down her window, says, where do I park? And I go, ma'am, where did you park the last two days? She goes, there, and pointed over to a local hotel. And I was like, well, so there. And she goes, but I was paying $25 a day. It's 100 today. Like, that's not... And so, to your point, when we're looking at those kinds of problems and solutions for it, it's so that we can help not only create the capacity, but also control the availability and the approachability of these things to make sure that it makes sense to a customer. Because as a client of that cheer, the owner of that cheer and dance convention, they're going to hear that from those moms, and then they're going to think twice about choosing Baltimore. So, it's again, 100% one of the narratives that we're engaging. Not only, you know, Deputy Mayor Williams is helping a lot with that, as well as our state partners, and quite frankly, engaging our customer to help be advocates for that kind of change.
Thank you. Happy to see that's on the radar and you're keeping that in the conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Executive Director Campbell. This is a follow-up. Do you have any, do you guys have any collaborations with the ride shares? Say if I, when I go to other cities for other conventions and say like a, say like a comm or something like that. They will have options where you'll get like 50% off if you use, say, an Uber, if you use a Lyft. So, do you guys have any like active ride-share collaborations? Or is that something that you have done in the past, or is that just up to the event? Who's putting it on?
No, but it's certainly something that we can look at. As I, to be honest with you right now, so I'm in, I've started year three of my tenure. I'm trying to figure out, okay, what makes the biggest impacts? That's a great idea, because my next step I go to is, okay, how do I procure that agreement and affair in transparent way? And I've got to noodle through that. Obviously, the ride-share companies are zoned, right? So, it's easy for pickup and drop-offs. We have a very easy drop-off and pickup situation. I know we partner with some of the local parking company, digital parking companies, to help incentivize where they go and what parking garage they park in. The same could happen with Uber, and I'm happy to explore that.
Thanks. I just think it's something, I see other cities like doing it. And again, I don't know if it is, if it's their, if it's their convention centers or the hosts that are taking care of it, or if it's the event planning, the event planners who are taking care of it. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I can promise to you is we're very involved in our industry association, the Association of Venue Managers. They're a really great resource. I can reach out to my colleagues across the country and kind of benchmark that exact idea and understand what return on investment there might actually be, and I'm happy to share that with you. Trust me, if there's money there, I'm going after it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize I was late to your presentation. I just wanted to say I love the murals. I know that we had talked about that a couple years ago, and that's a program that you're still working through. The one, you know, facing the baseball stadium is very vibrant and amazing, and then there's one on Pratt Street. Well, again, the whole point, when we talked about it, was that the Convention Center becomes not the destination, but the gateway, right? So that people come to Baltimore to do their convention, do whatever it is, but then they're able to see sights from the rest of the city and then want to go visit that.
100%.
So, can you tell them a little bit more about not just the murals, but what other programming you're putting in place to just make sure that that happens? So, people know that they can go up to any of our business areas and still, and get amazing food? Because it may not always be downtown. The amazing food is in the neighborhoods, frankly, right? So, how, how does that sort of concept of the, again, the Convention Center not being the destination, but the gateway? Same thing I say about the harbor. It should be the gateway, not the destination. How are you putting that in place? And by the way, whenever I go to the Convention Center, everybody is just super professional, super pleasant, and really, really wanting to be there to help people. So, I, that's obviously a compliment to your, to your leadership as well. But yeah, talk about this idea of how do we make sure that the Convention Center is that gateway?
So, I think it's, thank you for the comments, Councilwoman, and always appreciate your support. I think it's a two-pronged approach. There's the work that we're doing under our roof. The, and we're not done yet with the public art, by the way. We have some other exciting things brewing that I don't want to go on the record on with yet, but will be really cool if we pull it off and speaks exactly to what you're talking about. But how do we give those little breadcrumbs? The Kling Project that we just finished with the neighborhood representation by district has a legend, has, it incorporates some local businesses, but definitely iconic civic things that aren't a business owner, right? Like the parks, the attractions, the museums, because we want them to be there. In addition to that, we're obviously telling our story through one of the things that people care most about, food. The intentionality between our partnerships with local business owners to bring local flavor into our building doesn't stop with just drinking that cup of Matriarch or Cadiz cupcakes or whomever we're working with. There is either a table ten or a QR code, or that's what I'm talking about. Mike Saunders would be very happy to see that, Councilman. How do we make sure that we say, well, why is this important? Who is this? Because for all we know, Matriarch could be in Connecticut. And how's that, and how are we poised as part of our sales process? Again, booking these pieces of business years out, how do we show that intention on the front end? And it's with partnerships like that. Matriarch being an example, and I know it's in downtown, but the story of Matriarch as an example, we took them, we took Mike Saunders on the road with us and helped be one of the stories that helped us close the American Association for Association Executives. Because, I mean, they were practically in tears listening to his story. And there's a million owners that have that, that could have that same effect. So, our commitment here is to continue to evolve under our roof to make sure that we reflect a better Baltimore. And hey, how do I find that thing out in the greater community? And then to continue to craft these stories with Visit Baltimore, because a lot of it is in partnership with Visit Baltimore. Their market, I mean, they're a marketing organization, right? So, leveraging their sales collateral, those kits that we give a client to then send to their customers or their attendees before they come that talk about Black Restaurant Week or talk about the Maryland Zoo or talk about, to the Councilman, Council President Cohen's points, about perception of safety and how it ain't what you think it is. Those are all things that they do exceptionally well. And quite frankly, there's no reason for us to try to do better than them because they're already killing it. So we lean into those resources as a partner.
I appreciate that. I think Visit Baltimore could do better about marketing the rest of the city and not downtown. But I've always thought that, and I still think that. But I think that, yeah, and I definitely appreciate your efforts in trying to figure out those partnerships. Because you're right, if we have a small business there, they can tell their story and they can say, look, this guy over here in whatever neighborhood on Greenmount Avenue has the same story. Let's go see them, you know, or whatever it is. So I just, again, want to continue that, that conversation. So I appreciate it and look forward to, and I have not been able to be at your openings of the murals. That is my fault, but please keep inviting me because I do want to, I want to keep going.
We will be loud. We take no offense if your schedules do not allow for it. But I heard loud and clear during my confirmation process that you guys want to know what we're doing more often and we want to make sure that that message gets out to your staff and to you guys as however you want to receive it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mac, good to see you. You're doing a good job.
Thanks, sir.
And we appreciate you. I'm going to be very direct, and apologies for missing the first part of this. There was an attempt in this last legislative session to create an authority that would support downtown and the convention center. Some of the, as you're well aware, the hotels have signaled that they will not invest in themselves until something is done about the convention center. Why didn't that bill pass? What's the plan for it this next session? Clearly, something needs to happen if we are serious about the downtown renaissance. I think several of my questions, several of my colleagues have been questioned, have been asking questions about how does the convention center create, become a gateway? Whether that's into the neighborhoods like Councilmember Ramos was indicating, whether that's, you know, toward other parts of downtown, CFG, the great food and museums, the aquarium, whatever. But it isn't going to happen until we reinvest in the crumbling infrastructure that is the convention center. I know you've been singing this tune for a while. So like, give us the insight on why that bill didn't move in Annapolis and what the plan is to bring it back this next session? Is it just they ran out of money? Or like, what's the, what's the problem?
So the good news is, it's not as bad as you make it sound, which is good. Thank you for understanding our plight and the opportunity because that's the best elevator pitch I've heard for where we're trying to go. What happened at session was that the bill was amended. Instead of creating the authority, it asked to extend the work of the task force from last session to go further with all the bylaw creation, the funding mechanisms. Because what we did was, the idea was, let's create the authority in this session, assign the board that would govern it, and then give them the work of the next year to then build out those bylaws, the funding mechanism, then come back to session with that same goal of making it active, right? That goal hasn't changed. So instead of that board of this new authority driving that work, it's the work of the task force that's doing that. So in my aspirational goal here, that I think is very realistic, is we're still looking at going back next session no differently than we were before those amendments to activate a fully flushed-out, fully, you know, docket of Board of Directors. Here's your funding, here are your bylaws, here are the mission vision, all that kind of stuff. Because without that ecosystem created, we can't leverage the impact of what we do to drive the bonding capacity to renovate the building in the way we need to. We have the opportunity, to your point, of being the real catalyst and the glue that helps propel downtown rise to everything we know it should be and can be. Or we can continue to be the hole in the donut, right? With all the economic development, to your point, downtown partnership sites, what? $8 billion within a mile of McKelton.
Right.
That ain't us. We're not a part of that, but we can be.
Yeah, just, I'm glad to hear that, and I appreciate that explanation. I do think, as you're well aware, times are tight in the state of Maryland. And so whatever this looks like, whatever authority we ultimately stand up, I think it has to be very clear what we are seeking to do. And the case, and I know you all, I know you make it, but the case that you are going to need to make is that this really is about leverage. This really is about hearing from Hilton and Marriott and other folks that like, until there's, until we make the investment, they're not going to make the investment. And then it is catalytic to all the other neighborhoods and to the restaurants and to the hippodrome and to on and on and on and on. But, you know, I think we got to get moving on that. I think, you know, Councilman Blanchard made a really strong point in the hearing yesterday about how there's been all this talk about downtown. And I think right now, we're showing some real momentum and progress. But it's like, it's disparate, it's a little proof point, it's not connected to a whole. There's not a through line and it's not contiguous. Folks still don't feel like they can go from Lexington Market to the stadium, to the aquarium, to wherever. And I think this is a really critical piece. So you got to drive, you know, you have to be one of the driving forces of that. And you got to be really clear in the storytelling of why this is the right investment for a state that has real financial problems to make. I appreciate, again, I think you're doing a good job, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Real fast, you mentioned earlier about the parking or constraints lack thereof. Has there ever been any type of talks and negotiations with the Stadium Authority, the Orioles and/or Ravens? Because they don't usually consecutively play at the same time unless one makes the postseason, they make a deep run to utilize that parking lot and then vis-à-vis shuttle service to and from the convention center.
So up until now, Councilman, that largely has been a conversation that we broker, and then the Stadium Authority will have that conversation directly with our customer. They use it for things for marshaling their, what we call POVs or personally-owned vehicles that service the show or marshaling yards for their tractor-trailers or in some cases, attendees. What we're doing now is we're no longer brokering. We're finding ways how we can lead the conversation and kind of own that process. And it is through optional shuttle services. Because if you look at the difference between like a Martin's Crosswinds or Martin's West, right? A typical event space for local business, what do they have? They have a big parking lot. How do we compete with that for that short-term business? It's going to be through solutions like that, and we can't be passive with it. So yes, and we will continue to.
Thank you. That's great to hear, because obviously, I don't, we don't want to build more parking lots. That's the last thing we want. But at the same time, we understand that coming downtown, if you are somebody that lives in the surrounding area, it's more feasible for you to just drive in. But there's nowhere to park downtown because everything's either residential or you have to be there 5:00 in the morning. And so, yeah, if we can just be in charge of that process and even make that an added fee if someone wants to add that on to their package for the convention center, I feel like that's another way we can bring in revenue as well. But thank you. I'm glad to know that you guys are thinking about that.
Yes, sir, and this time next year, I'll have some success stories for you.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Mac, how's it going?
Good to see you.
Couple, couple things to hit on. One, to the point about access to the conventions and everything. Circulator, I don't know if that, so just to point out, you know, if you think back, when the circulator was getting started 15 years ago, whatever, the point of it was to help connect people who don't live in the area to stuff in the downtown, right? And then four of the five routes have stops at the convention center. And so do, do we have a way to like, try to communicate that to people who are in town for?
Yeah, so, great point, and I'm sorry I didn't make it, so thank you. All of that, the kind of the iRide kind of platform for the city of all of its transportation models, circulator being one of the biggest ones, is in all of our client kits, in the know-before kits that we create with Visit Baltimore to go out ahead of time. It's on our website as a mode of transportation. If someone comes to our website, it's like, how the heck do I get here? It's there. So, so it's there. It's probably, we're probably not leaning into it as much on a day-to-day basis, but...
Because it is, you know, like, when the circulator was founded, it was, it was a free transit system put in specifically to help with exactly this type of thing. So just something to keep in mind there. To, obviously, I'm a little biased as the district representative for downtown. But I think to maybe make a counter, a slight counter to my colleague from the 14th's point about the other neighborhoods in the city, you know, downtown's businesses certainly need a lot of help. And it's important for a lot of reasons. And considering that the convention center is in downtown, I do, I do think it's important that, that the businesses in downtown are being championed. I think that's an important part of what the convention center exists for. So I know that's a, I know that's a tough balance. I just, I feel like it was...
We can do both, Councilman, and we will.
And just wanted to put that in the ether.
I mean, we know that vibrancy is going to solve a lot of the concerns that people have about whether or not downtown is someplace they want to be. We do that through intentionality of booking stuff in our building, at the ballparks, at CFG, and they, they visit restaurants. We had the Islamic Circle in North America here last weekend on Topa Artscape. I was at Kona Grill just last, earlier this week, and they felt it. And they were so thankful. And they were, just to shout out to DOT, we had a food truck problem. We worked with them to negate the amount of food trucks that were illegally parking on Pratt Street. And they said, they saw, you know, exponential more business in their restaurant because of it. And if we're to be successful from a convention center standpoint, folks need to be able to walk to things on their brakes. As much as I want to go to Toki Underground and frequent all this stuff on Greenmount, which is absolutely important. Time is of the essence for a lot of these folks, and they got to be able to get to the matriarchs. They got to be able to get to Kona Grills.
Yeah, and I just keep moving on for the, just to be curt or timely here. And I do love the murals on Pratt Street. Great to hear that y'all are looking to do more of them. My last point about the task force, the report coming in on, I think it's December 1st is the deadline. Can, can you just briefly talk through what, what are the, not like, what are the answers, but like, what are the types of findings that that task force is going to be putting together for us? What will we learn when that's published?
So I would say the two major things that the, that we were asked to go back and flush out more before they created the authority to the Council President's question earlier was largely around what is the employment mechanism? Like, what is, what is, what is the people part look like? And then what do the, what's it, the money piece look like? So largely, what this will be doing is flushing out those two areas. How do we fund not only a sustainable convention center in its own ecosystem, but how do we build bonding capacity for the future projects that we need? The current projects that we need, quite frankly. And then how do we make sure that the 156 city employees that work for the agency now are kept whole? How do we make sure that their pension, their healthcare is respected? And those are the assurances that I felt that the delegation needed, and so it needed more work.
Okay, and the last point on that, the general type of, like, bill? Because I know you had mentioned a couple of different models for a potential convention center. Will that, will we see that in the report? As in like, could it be half the size? Could it be more vertical? Could it be, will that recommendation come out in the report?
That won't come from this task force. What will, though, is a report that will be coming from the state here in the next couple of weeks. Happy to get you a briefing on it that speaks to exactly that. Here are the different models we could do on the parcel. Here's what has a return on investment. So that's in there with rigor.
Great. Thanks so much, Mac.
Madam Chair. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be really brief. Director, I'll tell you the same thing I mentioned to DPW, same thing I mentioned to DGS. We live in a really old city. And because the infrastructure is so old, it makes all of our jobs really hard. So I commend you for taking on that task. Because day-to-day as council people, we realize how hard our job can be because of the infrastructure and lack of investment. But what I will say and try to task you with is trying to make sure that investment is a priority. You know, I think rebuilding the convention center would do a lot, not only for the city, but for the entire state. And while it's a monumental task, you know, I think you're the man for the job. And we want to be here to support you as you make that happen. Because I think what happened at the arena is proof that if you build it, they'll come. You know, just look at all this success of the arena. And it's just figuring out new and strategic ways to bring that finance in, then to make these investments happen, even in a difficult environment. I think what the state budget doesn't mean we don't try, it just means we have to try a little harder. So, but I'm, feel confident that when we make that investment and make those upgrades, rather than just little patches here and there, but the type of upgrades that our citizens deserve, that we'll reap the benefits from. So that's just my statement.
Agreed completely, and thank you for the sentiment.
Thank you, Executive Director Campbell, for joining us today.
My pleasure.